I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting in order on September 23rd. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call Kelly.
This is Better Ben.
Here.
Mr. Keesleyel.
Excused.
Ms. Lynn.
Delayed.
Mr. Rakowski.
Here.
Ms. Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Seng.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Stuart.
Here.
Mr. Roy.
Here.
Here.
Are exits met?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
First workshop we have tonight is from Duchess Boses and we have the district superintendent, Dr. Hulley.
Great. Well, thank you again for having me. This is really just an opportunity for me at the start of the year to kind of update you on some personnel matters and some other information and of course the terribly important capital project that we're working on. So just to frame your participation with Boses a little bit, I'd just like to share some of the enrollment figures. These are actually last year, so I don't want to mislead you, but we kind of get this presentation ready and go with it. So I'll be coming back at a later point with your enrollments for 1920. Beacon has 24 students enrolled in our alternative and special programs. That's 10 students at our Beta Alternative High School, nine at SPC, which is our K-8 program for kids with IEPs, and five in in-district classrooms that are taught by Boses personnel. Those are just classrooms around the county that are, we rent classrooms sometimes because of convenience, sometimes because that district has a large number of students. So a total of 24 of your students. In terms of our CTI enrollment, you have 59 students participating in Boses CTI. Broken out in this way, auto bodying collision, four students, careers in animal and plant science, one student, computer hardware and networking, three students, seven students in construction trades, seven students in cosmetology, three students in culinary arts, four students in early childhood, two students in graphic design, nine students in introduction to health occupations and nursing assistant, 11 students in security and law enforcement, two students in trade electricity, two students in TV video production, and three students in veterinary science, and one student in welding and fabrication. So I just share that with you so that you understand the scope of our partnership. As you know, oh, I'm sorry. So we've had some turnover this year from last. These are all retirements, but it's very, rather unusual for us to be able to fill those positions from within because we're not a very large organization and often do not have enough depth to do that. But in the case of our business manager, Sherri Wesley, who you've met before, has retired, and Matt was her right-hand man, I'm going to break this in there, right-hand man. And so it was very convenient for him to step up into that position. He's actually been working with the capital project since we began, and that's terribly important for you because all of the aid you're going to get from that project has to be processed through the Boses. So we want to make sure that somebody who knows what they're doing is there, and Matt takes this responsibility very seriously. The problem we have now is we had to find a new Matt, and I'll talk about that in a second. Eileen Scholes is the new director of communications. She was, she worked for Jen Kellum, who was the director of that department, and Eileen was on special projects. And so she has stepped up, and we're very excited about that. Eileen has lots of PR skills and has done a lot of work around the county. And you may know that we had for a very long time, over 15 years, a grant called RSC Task, which is Regional Special Education Technical Assistance Center. I think that's pretty close anyway. And when we, and they've changed the grant, and when we applied for it this time, we didn't get it, which was a little bit heartbreaking. But Jenny had been the director of that for many years and had done a great job. And before she submitted the grant, she had actually transferred into Educational Resources, which is our professional development area. So good that she's working with us in ER, but about three weeks ago, we found out that the people who got the grant could not sustain it. So we are now back in that regional support for special education. It's changed somewhat, but we are in the process of advertising and filling that position, including a new director. So in any case, those three leadership positions all came from within the agency, and that's exciting. So the new Matt is a guy named Mike. He was the executive director of Human Resources in Putnam, Northern Westchester. And as you know and we know, Putnam, Northern Westchester has a lot of excellent programs. We hope we can pick his brain and steal a lot of their excellence and make it part of the Duchess Boses excellence. So this summer, we run a couple of programs. I'm not sure this involves Beacon terribly, but I'll share it with you because it's something about how we're doing, and that's important to everybody. We run a middle school career and tech exploratory. It's about 42 kids, and they run through three technology programs during the summer. It's about a week or 10 days. And it's really just to familiarize some middle school kids with our programs. We fund that from our funds at CTI. And that year that it was 78, I think that was the year when we were charging tuition, so that may be the blip there. Extended school year program is typically for kids with IEPs. Very often, they're educated in their school, which I think Beacon does primarily. But we take students, not only students who are enrolled with us during the year, but other school districts who may not have a summer program for students with IEPs. And what's interesting about this is it's gone up 30 from the year before, and many of those who participate are not what we call component districts. And it's very important and good for us because they pay an extra cost, which helps lower the cost for all of our components. So having 200 kids in that and growing population is good. And then, again, I think you don't participate in this, but we offer regional summer school, and that is primarily for smaller school districts who can't sustain a summer school anymore. Or we also provide the testing. So if a school doesn't provide summer testing, August testing, and they want, a child wants to try the English exam one more time, they can pay a fee and come and just take the test. So those numbers are pretty level. We saw a little bit of a drop, and I think that drop is probably about the lowering enrollment across the county and across the state. But I think they're still pretty, generally pretty robust. With regard to the capital project, you know, I'm sure, that until the vote happens, we cannot ask the architects to fully develop the plan. And the reason for that is we have no money to pay them, and if it doesn't pass the vote, then we have no funds. So since the vote passed in December and through the spring and summer, we have been revising, redesigning, and rethinking the plan. And I'm here kind of just to bring you up to speed with how the plan may have changed. So this picture is kind of the whole footprint of our campus. At the bottom of your screen is the Salt Point Turnpike. That little yellow building, as you come in, in about the center, that's the administrative offices. And then straight up through the middle, the yellow is the existing CTI building, and the blue is the new building. That will be primarily the Alternative High School and the Conference Center. You may remember in the first iteration of this, there were three legs to that building. And one of the cost savings we did was we stacked classrooms on top of others. So there's an efficiency there in terms of cost for building, but even for maintenance. So instead of it being three legs, it's two legs, but two stories for most of the leg that comes from the top to the bottom. Just as a point of information, the dark gray is additional parking that does not currently exist there. I set a convocation with my faculty and staff. We have more parking. It's not all convenient, but we have more parking. And I'll remind you that as a point of security, you now enter the campus, enter those buildings from the back. And really, that's because people think of schools in a kind of traditional way, that you can just walk up to the front door and get in, and that will not be the case here. And we're able, because both schools will be joined, we will have one security vestibule, and people will be able to come in one place and have some efficiency with security. So this will be 205 additional parking spaces on the campus. This is a little hard to see, but this is the representation of the building as you drive into the campus. And that that you're seeing is the conference room or the conference Because this is a graphic, it depends on how the bidding goes, whether it'll look that nice or not. But that is the rendering that we have for the architects. This is the lower floor plan. At the bottom of the page, you'll see that room that's rounded, that is the large conference room. We have a better slide of it in just a minute. And across the foyer from that are some breakout rooms that you'll have some detail. The gray and the purple to the right is the existing CTI, and that's where it attaches. And there's one purple classroom right up against that new build, and that is one of our culinary arts classrooms. And what that will allow us to do is have those students help with the preparation of food for things that are going on in the conference room. And it's also around the corner from the regular cafeteria for that, for the Alternative High School. So they could actually, let's say on Tuesdays, provide a student-made meal. And those are some of the kind of efficiencies we're looking for. This is a detail that shows it a little more clearly. You'll see that the room at the bottom of the page is the big conference room, and it is, can be subdivided into three smaller rooms, or we can use it as one large conference room. And then if you look kind of diagonally to the left, across the foyer there, there are the three breakout rooms, also with walls that can be subdivided. This is just the picture with chairs and tables. So the large conference room can seat about 170, and probably without tables, we could probably fit in 215 or something like that. And then the small conference rooms are about 66 altogether, but breakout rooms have about 20. This is, again, a rendering. I, you know, I get nervous showing the renderings because it may not look like that when we're done, if the bidding doesn't go the way we want it to. But that's kind of what the conference room will look like. And you can look at the ceiling and see where the dividing rules will be, and we'll set up the orientation of those rooms differently if we're reducing the size. This is the second floor, the upper floor. You can see, we'll have classrooms above what you saw earlier. In the upper left-hand corner, we have a gymnasium that'll be used for the Alternative High School kids, but it will also serve the kids who are in security and law. You had a number of kids enrolled in that. Because a big part of that program, we have a couple of new instructors, is physical fitness. So they're running around the campus right now, but when winter comes, it makes it a little difficult. So it's kind of fun when we can use the facilities for a couple of different purposes. And I think it's time, it's time we'll figure out more and more of that. Also, next to the gym, you'll see many, many offices. And that's because our Alternative High School, different from some other alternative high schools, it's based on caseloads with social workers and psychologists. So that if a student is in a social worker's caseload and has a problem over the weekend and has to be hospitalized for a social emotional issue, that caseworker actually goes out and meets the family at the hospital and does that. It's kind of wraparound services. And so that explains all the many offices because there's a need for confidentiality and private counseling. That gives it to you a little more clearly, so you can see how many offices there are. Those are the offices primarily for the Alternative High School. And over to the right, I think we have another picture. The CTI career tech offices will be open right in what is now the 301, our famous and beloved room 301, which is the conference room now, two classrooms stuck together. That will become offices for the career and tech center. And that curved outline there will be a kind of a shade alcove for the kids while they're standing outside waiting for buses, et cetera. And I guess that's it, yes. What questions do you have for me?
Thank you for the presentation. I liked seeing the update on the capital project. It's all been exciting. You were talking about on slide two or slide three, your summer school numbers.
Yeah.
And the middle school course and tech exploratory sounded like an excellent, you know, introduction to middle school students to the different things that you have there. And you listed many of them. So why don't, why don't we have, is it a participation? Do we not subscribe to it? Why don't we have an opportunity for our middle schoolers to see this? Because you said you had none, right?
Yeah, I think it is because we pay for it. We don't charge for it like we have in the past. There's kind of limited numbers, and I think it's probably first come, first served. We could certainly get some information to Matt from the principal at CTI.
I think that would be good, because again, a lot of the, you know, we have discussed a lot here about what you called industrial arts facilities that we don't have, or maker spaces. And really, when you, I was impressed when you go through the list of CTI offerings. It's really great things that kids may not know. And which, my next comment was, we talked about the distance, you know, how, really how far it is to Boses. And I always put it that some kids on some of the tracks can't participate in CTI because they may be, their course load or the types of courses they're taking doesn't allow them to be, have the time. And we've kind of asked or challenged you, I think every year, about innovative ways in order to be able to bridge that gap, because we're not, we don't have a facility here. You know, just asking again if you've thought of it. Maybe there needs to be maybe a, each quarter of the year, we can, you know, rotating kids to give them opportunities to see electrical, to see, you know, skills that will, will, or would either expose them to trades or help them in their lives going forward.
So it is certainly something you have mentioned, and we've talked about. And one of the great pieces of information that I'm sure you know is that Duchess Community College is now building a southern campus. That is much closer for you guys, I presume. And we hope to partner with them. We do not currently have a lot of partnering with Duchess Community College for whatever reason. We hope that will change in next year. But that would give a full, a full scope of the courses we offer, but it would certainly offer some courses if they would work through that campus. Those, that program is going to be focused on advanced manufacturing, which is kind of cutting-edge stuff that's going on now. And we could share up at our campus some classroom space for some of their classes, and then down at the southern location, their new southern location, they could allow us to use some space to teach high school kids. But what you really want is to have a pathway from high school right into Duchess Community College. Good for them, good for the kids, good for everybody. We just haven't been able to do that. But I stood up at all the meetings and said, you know, this is a great opportunity to do just that, and I know you guys are focused on the distance for the travel.
Right. And I know we've also talked about potentially starting up an initiative here, and probably Craig's chomping at the bit, you know, about partnering with us and having our related offerings at Beacon, you know, Boses courses at Beacon because of our arts community. So I don't know if you've got any progress in those in that area.
We haven't got any progress in that, quite frankly, because we're a little focused on the capital project. But, you know, that certainly is on a list of things that we want to look at. You know, in some ways, you need kind of an agency to partner with us, and we just haven't gotten to that point yet. But, you know, if you know somebody that wants to talk to me, I'm really open to that. And, you know, put me in touch, and we can sit down and figure that out. We have a very lively arts program up in Poughkeepsie as well, if you may know. And we haven't quite gotten that together either, but it would make a nice, we could have it in the north and the south, and that might be great. Arts management, I think, is what we talked about.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thanks again.
Thank you, Dr. Hulley.
We'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
All right, our second workshop is Emery. Talking about funding and insurance reserve.
So I don't have a slide. It's more about a discussion. So I wanted to give the board a little bit of information that I think on new business, we would have an area to discuss it even more. So our audit is almost complete. And although we spent more money than we thought last year with some of the reserves, we still, our fund balance is still projected to be more than what it was last year. So it's, right now, it's at 6.4%. Last year, it was at 5.8%. The auditors would feel more comfortable if our unappropriated fund balance remained close to what it was last year. So we were coming up with some ideas. And what helped us out last year was the insurance reserve that we were able to do. We utilized all that money. And we'd like to, we'd like to fund the insurance reserve again. And the focus this time would be on doing the bigger fixes at the high school on the HVAC system here. So right now, we have, we had a consultant come in. We have some energy controls being worked on, but there's some piping, there's some equipment that needs to be redone, which right now, we do not have as part of the general fund budget. We can wait, the only other option would be to wait till we do a capital project. But again, if we vote in 2020, we won't be able to do the work in probably '22, '23, which kind of puts us out for a couple of years. This money would stay in this reserve until we needed to do actually something. So we would still be doing the current work that we're, we have the consultant in doing. We kind of consider ourselves lucky that the weather was the way it was this summer, but we're just afraid that it won't stay that way in the future. So we'd like to address this head-on. So the amount of money that, the difference between the 6.4% and the 5.8% would be $440,000. So if we were able to put that in the reserve, it would bring the fund balance to what it was last year. But it would also be able to have that money funded. We can go forward with some of the fixes. They don't all have to be this year. They can be in the summer. But then we can move the money out of the reserve when we need to, to make the repairs.
Why is it an insurance reserve?
Because we are still trying to get insurance money on this, even though it's kind of a long shot because of the age of the building. But we always try to put in an insurance claim. So that reserve allows us, it's for claims that are not covered by insurance. Last year, when we had some issues with mold in the high school, we did the same exact thing. We actually put a claim in. And we'll do the same thing for this as well.
Now that you mentioned it, what was the results on the insurance for the mold? I think we...
We did not. They did, they sent someone out, but that's an environment issue. They didn't find any malfunction. So now we're going to still try it from this aspect, now that we have a little more information on the HVAC system.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Emery. All right, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. So in reviewing the agenda, we do have an item that we'd like to add to the set agenda. It's, and we'll make it 11.11, and it'll be resolution 092319B. And it's going to read, "Motion to approve a paid administrative leave for employee number 5315 pending a district investigation." Can I get a motion to?
Oh, so moved.
Second. No, I didn't ask it. I just kind of stated it, and then I was like, I need to...
That's sort of taken in there.
Okay. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Any student, student school presentations? Parent groups, open to the public? Superintendent's report.
Hey, so I wanted to, at, at most of my superintendent reports coming up, what I wanted to do is just, it's not showing up. What do I?
Oh, sorry.
It's going, okay. I wanted to just show aspects of the 1920 budget in action. And so I will just quickly go through some pictures. This was a small budget item, but what we did was we gave the elementary schools, I think, $3,000, and the secondary schools $5,000 each to, to either do furniture replacement and/or provide flexible seating. And so there's a lot of excitement around this. And so I just wanted to walk you through some of the pictures. With the new classroom furniture replacements, principals and teachers are really opting for desks that can be easily moved around, you know, to form groups, to go independent. And so this is what you see in one of our high school classes here. Another high school class. These are desks that easily, again, form group work, or groups for group work, but also can have students all by themselves. Little close-up there. Here we have some, you know, the high school teachers, you may have heard, are, some of the high school teachers are trying to make their classrooms a little more homey. And so you see that here and here, and some small group stuff. Again, this was a small budget initiative, but it's funny how these smaller budget initiatives sometimes really get a lot of people talking. And so this is, again, some high school stuff. You know, a lot could be said for having, one of the goals we had going into this was, over the next several years, we wanted students to walk into all of our classrooms and have some kind of choice of seat. Not maybe like that they have the choice every day, but that every school had some different kinds of seating. While we haven't done this here, some school districts have had shadow of student, where adults in the district shadow, like a high school student or a middle school student through an entire schedule. And what I've heard at workshops, people talk about their experiences, usually what the adults talk about. One of the things is sitting, sitting in these student desks all day. So this is something that, again, another class, just with some new furniture, that we've been working on. This is the art, this picture didn't come out great. But this is the, you know, the egg room, the art gallery over here. And so one of the art classes made some nice scenes for the wall. They made a little campfire. And this will be used for classes that want to do some quiet kinds of things, or students who need a quiet space. So it's kind of like an artsy campfire experience in there, which is cool. Again, this is part of the high school's effort to make the high school a little bit more homey this year. A couple images from Rhombout. One of these classrooms is, was one of the renovated classrooms. The one in the upper left corner is the ADL classroom. So you see those ball chairs with back support. I love the picture of the standing desk. And the kids really want to use the standing desk, and so we, over time, want to get more of those. At that level, I think middle school's a great time for kids to really start using those, although I know we have students at the elementary level using them as well. Here's some pictures from Glenham. Again, in the effort to, especially when kids are doing things like reading, you know, I think oftentimes in our own lives, when we're curling up with a book, we're not sitting in a straight back chair doing it. We try to get a little more comfortable. So we're trying to do the same for our students. Here's some more images of this effort to provide more flexible seating. This is at Glenham as well. More from Glenham. I love these. These are these little writing, you know, these little sort of lap writing things. And it's amazing how sometimes writing in a slightly different format than the desk really can sometimes up the motivation for elementary students. And so that's a Glenham picture as well. This is a classroom at Forrestal, fourth grade classroom. And that's Mrs. Woggy's class. And she has not had new furniture. She's been in that classroom for a really long time, and I think it's 20 years. And she has new furniture, and she is absolutely excited. So again, she's going with that flexible, you know, you can move the desks around a little bit, and kids can be flexible with their grouping. This is another class that, again, sort of both they're doing writing and reading activities in a more comfortable kind of space. This is Forrestal again. So again, some of this, that's another classroom. This is Forestal again. So again, so this, that's another classroom, fourth grade classroom, they got new furniture. And then on the right is a kindergarten class that, at every one of their work tables, there's a stool, and the kids take turns sitting on the stool, and the stool provides a little bit of wiggle for kids who need that. And I love this picture too, this is one of the classrooms as well, again, that comfort for reading. So this is still a work in progress, both for future years and for the current year. In some schools, the orders haven't, the orders haven't come in yet, and principals are still working with teachers to kind of identify different kinds of things. So, so, you know, I'll continue to update it. Again, a small budget initiative, but I think it's important for you all to see, you know, some things that are happening, and, and I'll be doing this in our different superintendent reports, just to focus on other things that were part of last year's budget. Couple of quick updates, the middle school teachers have all been trained in the Reading Three Sixty Assessment, the STAR Three Sixty Assessment, and that's a computer-based reading tool, and the trainings went really well. For, for an assessment, there's a lot of excitement, I shouldn't say for an assessment, there's a lot of excitement on the half of the teachers just from the information that the assessment gathers, and also the ease of use. And so I think some have already started implementing, from what I'm hearing, but full, full implementation of that will be happening this week. And so that's another sort of smaller project, but yet very important to be more systemic in the assessment data that we're gathering, especially around reading. And I got to see one of the groups of middle school teachers last week in the training, and there was just a ton of positivity there in that training, so that was really great to see. Another update is in our administrative meetings, I, you know, talked about the importance of the circle, both responsive classroom and restorative practices. Our administrative meetings, the last, the last few months, we have a monthly meeting. We started in a circle this last meeting we had, we just ended up staying in the circle the whole time, and so we're trying to really practice what we preach, and we're trying to learn and grow with these things as we go too. My last update to the board is, we took a bit from the conversation from the retreat, and so we mapped out the board meetings, at least the workshops, through December. And what we are trying to do, a couple of things, we're trying to have our principals and department heads do a ten to fifteen minute update on what the board goals look like, and the strategic plan look like in their buildings or departments. And then, the second workshop of those meetings is going to be me and my team facilitating, you know, board conversation around each of those goals, sort of talking short-term and long-term, talking about the metrics that we're either developing or gathering. And so, our hope is that this really helps set the stage to finalize that multi-year strategic plan, and it also hopefully puts us in a really great place to start budget conversations in January. You know, it actually, I think you can make the argument that, that having these conversations now is really doing you around budgeting, because you're hearing from our principals, department heads, and the executive team about what the budget in action looks like, and what the board goals look like in action this fall, and it helps us all plan when we have all our budget workshops in winter and spring. And so, the board has any feedback about that, I sent it in attachment to an email, you can let me know past today, or during the meeting, or whatever, but the administrative team is very excited. One of the pieces of feedback they gave is, do we have to just go fifteen minutes? Can we go a little bit longer? And so I, I do think revenue is sometimes good, but we'll try to work on that because there's a lot of excitement, and they have a lot to share, so that's a great, that's a great problem to have. And we're really excited to talk about the board goals too. So that's what I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, sorry, I will answer them for you.
One question, just where we are with the ventilators? Any update on, because we were getting shipments in, we looked at the classrooms, and I was happy to see that the, the areas were blocked off appropriately, but are we moving forward with actually installing?
Yes, installation has been happening. You see the, what's the name of the HVAC contractor?
MDS.
MDS, you see their trucks? I was pleased to see their trucks when I was at the soccer field on Saturday. All their trucks were over at Sargent, which means they were working over the weekend to get them installed. I think we actually have some up and running on Friday, I want to say at Sargent on the second?
I believe so.
Floor, I know we were going to have some up and running, and so I think in the next week, our hope is that Sargent gets done, week to ten days, and then they move to South. And when they're done with South, again, hopefully by the first week of October-ish, second week of October, that they're fully done installing these. And which leads me to, I'll work with Anthony and Meredith to schedule board tours of the building as well, which is something that we do every year. And we did the, for the facilities committee, we looked at some of the new classrooms, but we wanted to, you know, board tours of all of our buildings over a few board meetings. We'll probably start that in October.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to new business. The first topic is the funding of the insurance reserve. This is a workshop that Emery did, we wanted to see if there was any discussion. This is what it looks like written out. If there's no discussion, we can make a motion to approve. No discussion needed. Need a motion to approve Agenda Item Nine Point Oh One, which is Resolution Zero Nine One Nine One Nine B.
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question?
No. This is, I just want to...
Close. Seeing none, eight zero. All right, the next one is a discussion with a possible action on diversity committee. There's been some discussion about whether the diversity committee should become a district committee instead of a board committee. So we wanted to put it on here for discussion.
What's that then?
Say it again, Anthony.
Yes, so the, I feel that I support this action to convert the diversity committee from a board committee to a district committee, because at the time that we committed, we formed the board committee, there was, there was no district committee on the topic. Now we have, we have building-level committees, we've got administrator-level meetings, we have a board goal. You know, I think the purpose of having board committees is, is to advise, especially in, in areas where there are no, there are no advices being made otherwise. And now that this, that we're not doing a lot of work on this, but I think it's, it's proper to shift it to a district committee. And we're closer to where all the work is actually being done.
Well, we appreciate that, Anthony, and I think that you had a large role in that piece, so good job getting that diversity committee going. And, you know, with that initiative that started out as a board committee, going to a district committee, I think is the right step as well.
And I just need to say from my end, we're really excited about it becoming a district committee. We have a lot of thoughts about how to use the committee. I was inspired from a session today, I was at the Niskus Fall Institute, and, which is the superintendent association for New York, and I envisioned part of the meeting doing a restorative circle. The level one of these circles is, is called a community building circle, and I think that'd be a great way to facilitate the community part, and then, and then the other half of the meeting being kind of like updating on the work in progress, and, you know, setting goals and that kind of stuff. So I'm really excited to be moving in this direction, and I look forward to taking it over with my team.
So what is the prime, what is the high-level difference between board committee and the district committee?
Well, board committee doesn't have employees of the district besides the superintendent on it, whereas the district committee would have employees, and it would be made up of a team of school community members, with a board rep to report out as to what the progress has been making. So similar to wellness that Flor is on, similar to the curriculum piece that Meredith is on, it would be similar, that they would report out, and the issues would be discussed, but they're easier, from my perspective, I think they're a little easier to implement because you're getting buy-in from the staff and the community of the district, where it's not just a, the community members or board members.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
I also just wanted to add, I appreciate you saying, highlighting how Anthony has kept this issue front and center for us as a district for several years now, and prior to, you know, during our superintendent search, and as the years have followed, just has maintained a focus on this issue. And the fact that it can be elevated to a district committee where, where leadership and staff and the school community is ready to take it on and build up to the work that's already been done is, is a testament to everything that you've done to bring it to this point, Anthony.
Thanks, you know, if, if I can just share that appreciation, I don't want to help myself, like, you know, I think Anthony White, Kenny Gadsden, and George DePachin, we met, you know, at the library all hours on one day, and, and, you know, this is what, this is what we came up with, so it wasn't, it wasn't just me.
I wanted to add that the, this particular committee, although a board committee, has typically had a very strong participation from people who were not board members, as well as some board members who dropped in from time to time. So it has been functioning as a connecting to the community committee, even in its own past status. So now it has a status going this way, then more reflects the way it actually operates and runs.
I, I do have a, I do have an email list of people that have attended in the past.
Okay.
It's, it's up to Matt whether he wants that list, or he just wants me to keep using it, or...
No, I, I would love to have the list, Anthony.
Okay, no problem.
So the first motion that we need to make is a motion to dissolve the diversity committee as a board committee.
We're going to add this to the agenda?
It's on the agenda, it's new business.
Can I, can I ask a final question?
Sure.
If we turn this into a district committee, that will that mean there just needs to be one?
A board rep.
Rep.
Yep.
Rather than the current three?
Correct.
But we can still...
Still attend.
Okay.
All right, so I need a motion to dissolve the diversity committee as a board committee.
Motion.
I need a second. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, eight zero. I need a motion to put on, I need a motion to create a district committee of, what are we going to call it, the diversity committee or equality?
Diversity and Equity Committee. It's a board, I think the board goal, I should know this. Is it an equity goal or diversity and equity? I think diversity, I'd like to keep the word diversity in it just because of the long history of diversity, but just say the diversity and equity.
So I need a motion to create a diversity and equity committee as a district committee? Meredith, second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Motion carried, eight zero. All right, I need to, Anthony, do you want to be a board rep for that committee?
Yeah.
Anybody opposed that? All right, here's the board rep. So Kelly, where it goes for committee reports including board comments, we're just going to make that diversity and equity.
Anthony?
Yes?
Didn't we have nineteen nine oh three discussion on the historic property tax?
We're, we're not, yeah, just finishing up this piece, so for future meetings, I'm not done.
Okay, that's all right.
So diversity and equity on that, for the committee reports including board comments versus diversity committee, we can just put diversity and equity committee, and then we can have the board, board rep would be Anthony. All right, and the third topic for new business is a discussion on the historic property tax exemption. I believe that people have reached out to board members to ask about having a discussion with the city council to see if, about making an exemption for historic property tax exemption. So I thought it would be appropriate to have a discussion to see how we want to engage in the process of going forward, working with the city to, on this topic.
Good, Councilperson Macrito emailed the entire board and offered to have a meeting with a couple of board members, a couple of council members and their tax assessor to go over the details of this. I don't, I'm not sure if everyone saw the email last week, but the council unanimously approved this historic property tax incentive, and we are, we are named in it, so it might be nice to understand it better.
So I have a question, so I thought, I saw that they had approved it, so the discussion is more about implementation of it?
Impact is really...
Or impact, because I mean, they, they, hopefully they thought about the implementation of it.
Hopefully. I mean, it sounds like there's, there's sort of, they approved this initial part, but they said that there would be a workshop in December going further, and I just, I thought that since we were named in it, that it would be good to understand what the impact on the district would be.
So from what I can tell, the interest in the school district, and also the county, which is mentioned in the resolution, is that the, the city council can only make decisions based on their own jurisdiction of how much taxes they collect, and if they want to issue an exemption for renovation of historic properties, they can do so, but they can only do so affecting their, their own city tax levy. They would like to, they would like to ask, what they did by resolution, that the county and the, and the school district consider the same, so that when a homeowner renovates a historic property, that they get some tax relief from all three entities and not just the city of Beacon. I guess there's an argument whether or not, you know, if, if, if the, if the city's the only tax incentive that you provide, you know, will, will the owner find it worthwhile to restore property to its historic state rather than just renovate it, to a modern, more modern state?
So I don't quite get how, we don't have an assessor. The cities and, the city and the towns have assessors, so assessment is controlled by those officials, not by us. We just send out the bills based on the assessments that are handed down to us, so I don't see that we can affect that. Do we have an official communication from the city attorney or anything, you know? What specifically are we being asked to do, if you can say?
We haven't been asked to do anything, we were just sent notice that this, it's under consideration, this resolution, right? Well, it was approved, I thought, wasn't it Terry Wood's here earlier, but we received a resolution to request Duchess County and the Beacon City School District to exempt historic properties from taxation and special valorum levies, valorum levies. So it's, do you, do you have that, did you get that email? We received it on...
The one from the council and Macrito?
No, no, it was, it was attached to...
The previous one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't recall exactly what we're being asked to do, if anything, so...
Well, I wanted to understand what we were more, more about, yeah, I was just, I was asking for communication between, you know, with the city so that we could understand a little bit more what the potential impact on the district could be, and, yeah. I mean, if we are being asked to eventually buy into this or not, I think we should get some information.
Craig, I mean, that's a fair, that is a fair statement, and that is, I think, why, I think it's a good idea to have the, this, this tax, the city tax assessor and whoever else the city wants to send over to explain what they're asking for.
They're asking us to adopt a resolution to exempt historic real property.
Right, so I think the first part is, is everybody here okay with a couple of board members meeting with the tax, the tax assessor and stuff?
I'd rather, I'd rather be a workshop at this, at the, at the school district meeting.
We, does the tax assessor, the tax assessor is not required to attend city council meetings, I guess, so... Because, I mean, that's always a conflict because of the meetings being on the same night, but that wouldn't, so we wouldn't necessarily have council member representation, but we could have the tax assessor.
I'm just, it, it, I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's not a clear issue, so if the tax assessor can, if the city tax officer can present and explain what they want the school district to do, you know, if you only send a couple of board members, you may, you may still have some new requirements afterwards. Unless you workshop it, I think all board members would be able... Unless you workshop it, I think all board members would be able to ask questions, but we can do it all.
I, I agree with you, Anthony. I think it would be good if it was, if it was recorded so that the public could view it as well.
So why don't we reach out and see if that would, that's something that's feasible?
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions or comments for historic property tax exemption?
Craig, it was September fourth we received the email, just, September fourth is when we received.
All right, Grace, you're on. Been sitting here patiently waiting.
Hi, everyone. I just first wanna start out and say that all the students have now gotten our laptops and although many of us were apprehensive, I think they're a great addition to school. For example, earlier this week or the past week, we all had presentations in DCC English and instead of waiting ten minutes to log on to the main teacher's computer, it was so easy to put in the HDI and import. And presentations ran smoothly and it was a lot of fun. It was great. And today, I'm also the student council president and we voted on spirit days for homecoming next week and we're gonna start rolling those out tomorrow and everyone's very excited for homecoming and the games and the big football game and festivities. And that's it, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Grace? You guys are too easy on her.
Well, what was the apprehension about the, what was the, what were the concerns about the?
A lot of kids didn't know if they would be able to keep track of them or break them or lose them. And a lot of kids don't like typing notes and stuff like that, they like handwriting. But in all my classes, barely anyone has a notebook anymore. Everyone's typing and stuff. It's a lot of fun.
And how about the, a tech support or they have students on the, you know, technical revolution team, how's that going?
Yeah, a lot of my friends are actually in that and I'm not sure if they know what they're doing, but.
Grace, this is recorded, you know? Well, that's the point of school, they're learning. They're showing an interest and.
It'll get better over time.
Good job, Grace. Flora?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm so excited about the one one program and also the alternative seating. I actually got a chance to see some of that in action and it definitely makes the classroom feel a lot more dynamic and whole. And I really love it. I just have an announcement for the wellness committee meeting. We have started scheduling this year's meetings. They're going to take place on the first Wednesday of the month at four P M. The first one is set for Wednesday, October second at four. That's at Beacon High School Community Room. And I've had a great conversation with Dr. Rollin, the new committee chair, and we're gonna work on putting together an agenda that develops short and long term goals for the committee. That is a good, excellent. And sort of make it, make it really a place to turn ideas into actions, so I'm looking forward to that. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Flora? You guys are too easy on her now. Alyssa?
I don't have any comments except to say if no one opposes for Spirit of Beacon Day, I have a family obligation that came up and if it doesn't cause any trouble, I'd like to be excused from marching in the parade on Sunday, if that's okay.
That's okay.
I do actually have a question. Are we, are we meeting somewhere in the event, like?
Yeah, do we, we find out where we are in the order? I'll find out where we are in the order and yes, we meet in the rally point, which is the ninety.
And I haven't got my t-shirt yet.
Okay.
Sean Jimm, I usually.
I would get with Sean. Yeah, who, who's marching again? Flora? Flora and I?
Oh, God.
I'm out of town, I have a wedding.
How many?
Okay, Anthony, good, all right.
I think they said they'd let you know at the gathering point, like where you.
Okay.
I've been helping with the sergeant.
They usually march right past me. Okay. Well, I think this. I might be there.
Any questions? Any questions for Alyssa?
For me?
You're excused from the. Mike?
I, I too am excited for the one to one program. I remember hearing initial, the initial estimates of how long it would take to roll this program out and, you know, thanks, thanks to all involved, it was, you know, incredibly short and so, really important program. Glad to see that it got underway and is, is underway. The last facilities committee meeting, we did do a walkthrough through the capital improvements at Rambout, which were, you know, very good to see. We did see some of the, the seating and the new desks, as well as the, uh, how the science room facilities and the, the home careers facility and the other facilities. That was really good to see. Then we went over to the football field and Anthony tried to kick a field goal.
I kicked a field goal.
I didn't suck over the.
I kicked a field goal and I missed a couple more.
But his shoes were work shoes, so he was very concerned about, you know, taking.
I had leather soles on.
It was good to see that he was thinking safety first. We then went to, I did go to the, that first Friday football game and it was super exciting to see the parking lots full of people, full of cars and the, and the area full of people and the excitement and the band playing and the cheerleaders. And it was just really spectacular, so, always happy to see that, that we came together, so absolutely. That's all.
Great.
I actually do have a question. Are the bleachers that are at the new field now, are they the bleachers that, they're not?
No.
No.
Temporarily.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we, we have these bleachers coming in, they're called tow behinds. I mean, they're not necessarily permanent bleachers either, but they go much higher and.
Okay.
And I think we're supposed to come today. I mean, we were both out of the office today, so I will check tomorrow.
No, that's okay. My kids told me that at the first game, they were on the bleachers and they were really afraid that the whole thing was gonna fall down, 'cause it was like, 'cause everybody was standing and it was, everyone was really excited and, and I said, oh, I hope those aren't the bleachers that were.
No.
The good ones.
And then they'll be permanent. I mean, then we'll be getting the permanent.
Right.
Large fixed set.
My kids are also really happy that there were no fights. My son said there wasn't even any fights at the first game and I said, well, why? And he said, usually there's a fight, nobody was fighting. So I think that.
It's magic.
We have a, a lot of adults are there, so. And our kids make really good decisions. Yes.
I just think it's because the kids were just all so happy about what we have now, so.
It is definitely a thing to do.
And there was enough fight that even on the soccer field right next to it, there, I mean, it was full of kids, you know, playing, playing soccer. It was really, really a great night for everybody.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, we had to send our trainer over for a minute.
Yes.
Who, when you play pickup, who would think a trainer comes to help you with your sprained ankle? But when you do it next to the football game, you get that kind of service here, but. All right, Kristen?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna have any comments, but I do wanna sort of add to this turf field conversation and this is not to pick on you by calling it the football field, but I've been spending a lot of time calling it the turf field because the thing that's been interesting about having the things from the capital project become a reality is, I think people really do lose sight of the things that seem like they've been here all along, with the flexible seating, since it gets taken to right away. It's something that I think almost like people are appreciative of it, but then don't see it as much. But the most visible thing is the turf field and even though that was used for, it will be used for a homecoming football game and it is also a football field, it will also be girls soccer and soccer and, so it's multi-purpose for all of the teams and the broader community. And I think the other nice thing, based on everything I've heard, I wasn't able to be there Friday night, which I'm sad about, but is it just, does sound like a great thing to do on a Friday night. And I think just kind of completing the campus here and giving the students a place to go and an event to focus on and a way to feel connected is, is so important and one of the reasons why it's more than just this, you know, sports field.
Can I just add on to that? I was talking to one of the P E teachers and they were telling me the benefits about the P E classes. Right, it rained the night before where they wouldn't have been able to take their classes out and they were ready to go out onto turf field because it, the rain didn't affect and we know that land was wet before. So just seeing and hearing that from the P E teacher, like we think of the extracurricular, the sports team and stuff, but to hear how all students have access to it and how the P E classes can utilize it even when it rained the night before, so they could go out. And he was talking about how it's a little warmer on the turf, right? And so they'll be able to utilize it a little bit longer into the fall to, to go outside and stuff. So having that, hearing that P E teacher say that, it was awesome to see. And you know what? It does benefit our sports teams, but it's impacting all kids because of the P E part as well.
Yeah, I think that's important. I have heard from more than one person, you know, when commenting on the capital project, well, maybe next year, or maybe next project, we can do something that benefits all students. And I think the response that you have to that is, the bulk of our capital project did go to a lot of work at Rambout, which was really great and has improved the built and farm there. This is the most visible sort of marquee thing that I think represents the most significant change, but if people are interested in, in having their ideas heard, they're more than welcome to come to the facilities meeting. We're going to start developing that project now and over the next year before it goes out to a vote. And, and also give, give, if you think that it hasn't benefited all the students, give it some time, 'cause I think that, that it'll become apparent that the turf field has a broader purpose.
When is the next facilities?
It's, when's our first board meeting in the month, I suppose.
There's a holiday back Wednesday after.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
So do we wanna do it on the Thursday?
No.
Yes. I was trying to, also the members of the facilities committee are also the audit committee, so I'm trying to schedule audit committee.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna do it?
So we can do it.
Thursday, the Thursday after you don't report?
Pretending.
October tenth?
I can't get on the internet, so.
I can't check my calendar?
I can check my calendar. The fire rate things down every week.
Yeah, but anytime of the week is good.
That's, I think that'll be fine.
Thursday.
The auditors will come to the meeting on the twenty first, but they wanna have the committee meeting before, 'cause there's a scheduling conflict.
So that's on the tenth then?
October tenth, and so facilities would be seven?
Seven o'clock, yeah.
Can we do?
Audit at six?
Oh, no, sorry, what do you wanna do?
Yes, that would be helpful, 'cause I think she may have another meeting, so she could just jet off to that.
So six.
So you're talking October tenth for Thursday?
Yep.
For facilities?
And audit committee?
Now which one is gonna be at seven?
Six o'clock will be audit and seven o'clock will be facilities.
Six audit, okay.
Can any of us come to that facilities meeting if we're interested?
Always, please. We'd love it.
Can I piggyback, I read them?
Yeah.
Can we throw on to the Thursday, October tenth trifecta and have the first policy committee meeting at eight fifteen?
Wait, so, do we have a board meeting that Monday night?
Yes.
No.
The seventh?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
We do, yes.
Okay. All right, sure.
Hmm, so at eight fifteen, we'll do policy on October tenth.
Oh, great, okay.
Since we haven't had the first one, then we could set the chair and stuff and since we don't have a chair with the schedule and stuff, we could have the first one.
Let's check with that, 'cause he's.
We should make sure James can be.
Um, that Thursday night might not work for me. I'm just really sorry. I just realized we go to Syracuse once a year to see my son's doctor and we need to, we were gonna go Thursday night. Um. Can we do Wednesday, the ninth?
That's a holiday. That's why we moved it to Thursday, 'cause it's.
Unless you wanna, you don't wanna do two days in a row, like.
At Tuesday, it's, I'm really sorry.
No, it's fine.
The eighth?
Tuesday, Tuesday, good. Don't, don't change the plan, if that's where you're going, let's just.
I mean, yeah, Tuesday, I could do two nights in a row, that's not a problem for me. Tuesday the eighth. I'm sorry about changing.
So it's Tuesday the eighth of August?
Tuesday the eighth. Emery, you're gonna check with audit at six, um, the eighth?
Okay, so then.
And then we're gonna go policy at eight fifteen on the eighth. We're gonna call it the trifecta.
And then we're done for the year, Emery said.
Then what?
Then we're off for the, we bank the time.
All right.
Just kidding.
Any questions for Kristen? All right, Craig?
Uh, two things. One of them is that a safety hazard has been brought to my attention on the, which isn't really our job, is that the city of Beacon has a road known as the road that comes into Beacon High School in Rambout, Metamont, that could use a crosswalk marking at the area between Meadow Ridge and the high school. Students do cross there, but there's apparently nothing on the pavement indicating this crosswalk. This is the case in a number of other places where there obviously are crosswalks. Our concern is that if anybody gets hit, it's probably one of our students. Cars did work through there and I've seen that and I'm concerned about it. So I think we should notify the city of Beacon that there's a need for a crosswalk marking on that spot.
Did you, Craig, can I ask you, did you hear about this from a member of the public?
Yeah.
Um, so I think that, I mean, I was speaking for myself, I think it's, we can definitely decide if like, you know, we can have Matt reach out, but I also think it's good to encourage those folks to let the city know about it, too.
Right, reach out and direct it to the city, of course.
Yeah.
It is not up to us to mark the city's roads, so there's a lot we can do other than say hello.
Yeah.
So this past Saturday, there was a wonderful event held at Beacon High School, it was called Theater Day. And it was an amazing event that involved a large number of students. I think they were planning to feed three hundred people, so I guess that was the expected attendance. I'm not sure how much, but there was a good crowd. And many professionals from theater arts, from stagecraft, acting, to dance, to auditioning for parts. Seminars were given. The students came not only from Beacon, but from other school districts in the region. And I was impressed with the curriculum that was being offered and it was free and pretty well attended. So that's a real feather in the cap of our dramatics program and I hope they do it again year after year. That's it.
Any questions for Craig? Anthony?
Well, good evening. Thank you for letting me video participate. I, um, I, I don't really have much comments at this time, as usual for me. I think a lot of my time was invested in, in the conversations on the district committee and, and there's a lot of work coming up for Spirit of Beacon Day. I belong to a couple of clubs, so they're all pulling me apart here, so, that's all I got. Thank you.
Any questions for Anthony? Meredith?
A few things. I also was able to stop by the game on Friday night. It was a really great scene there. I was trying to talk to a couple of teachers, but it was very hard to have a conversation because there were so many students coming up to them and hugging them and greeting them and it was just a great energy there. And great to see the pep band, the cheer team, et cetera. I also went to the open house at Rambout and got to see the new science lab, which looks amazing and some of the other improvements and in general, great energy there. And, and they are doing a lot of, you know, a lot of new initiatives. There's this thing that I think that they're also doing at Sergeant called Field Something, where you can actually order your groceries from, from local farms and pick up on Fridays. And does Sergeant do that also, Kristen?
I know they were talking about it, I don't know, I haven't used it, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's just starting up, but it looks really cool. I encourage any parents. Well, I don't know if anyone from the district could do it, but I'm definitely, parents that have students at Rambout, to look into it. I wanted to say, I, I mentioned this last year, now that there's a policy meeting set, I really would love it if we could discuss whether or not we need, well, I think we do need, but if everyone agrees, a cellphone use policy. And I, I think that that would involve some input from, from teachers and staff that would eventually hopefully become a board policy. So I just wanted to put that in everybody's ear. And I think we decided at the retreat that we would discuss it.
We put it on for new, new business for discussion, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda at the next board meeting to discuss the ins and outs as to the.
Whether or not the policy, it should be discussed as a policy. Whether or not the policy, it should be discussed as a policy.
Right, and then, then it would be sent to the policy if the consensus of the board has said it should go to policy.
Great. I attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting last week and we went over the proposed resolutions for the convention this year. These are resolutions not proposed by NISBA, but proposed by various districts within New York State and then NISBA weighs in whether or not they support it. I emailed it to everyone tonight and I was hoping that we could put it on the agenda for next, next meeting. There are several, there's some really good ones in there. There's a couple that NISBA's not, they, they're proposing not to support that I actually do support and would like to hear how other board members feel about it. For example, they have one that we've been directly impacted by about allowing retired law enforcement officers to work in public schools as security guards without effect on their pensions. For what, I'm not exactly, they, and they, within the, the link that I emailed everyone, they have a rationale why they are, are not supporting it, but as we know, we, our, our director of security, yeah, is impacted by that. There, and there's one about, that they're also not supporting about lowering the age of eligibility for commercial driver's license. And, you know, we, we've talked a lot about our shortage of bus drivers, so there, that seemed like something to, that I think might be helpful.
So I could put that on new business as well?
Yeah, so I encourage everyone to look through it because it's, there's some interesting things in there.
And that would be great because at the NISBA convention, we have a voting delegate and I've been the voting delegate for the last couple of years and this will give direction from the board as to how you guys want me to vote. If I was unsure in the past, I would say silent and not vote either way. If I had a good general consensus, I would go, but now we could go through if you have any reservations about any or if you want to support ones that NISBA's not supporting or that their board is deciding not to support, we can mark, mark it up and then when I go as a voting delegate, I could act upon the board and speak under a half.
Um, it's a, it's a little bit long, so it'd be great if everyone found what was important to them so that we didn't have to go through every one necessarily. The other thing that I would, we don't need to, everybody asked to put a lot of stuff on next, the next agenda, but Anthony emailed an interesting document about board committees and there are definitely some committees, I guess, that are required by the state that we do not have, so I wanted to talk about that. And, and there were a couple that whether the state required or not, I think would be really helpful for us to have. So we don't have to do that next, we can decide how heavy the agenda is, but I, I think sometime in the next few months, it'd be good to talk about that. Anthony, thank you very much for sending that.
Good.
The last thing is that there's a curriculum committee meeting on Wednesday.
Any questions for Meredith? All right. I have no comments. All right, moving on to consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits support of education, make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the rights of all board members be heard on any particular issue. Any members of the board like any item from the consent agenda poll, remember we do have eleven point eleven, which is the resolution oh nine two three one nine date that we added to consent agenda. All right, want the poll eleven point oh nine? Any other items? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve eleven point oh two, eleven point oh one through eleven point eleven minus eleven point oh nine.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. I need a motion to approve agenda item eleven point oh nine.
So.
Second? Comments or questions?
I did have comments when you read through the contract or the statement of work, it's really not clear what deliverables, really what the, what the contract is about, what deliverables there are, what services were going to be provided, what timeline or what cost or what price is included in here, so that's, makes it difficult to, to really understand what we're approving.
Yeah, I think there should be certain standards for contracts that are presented to the board, that there should be a clear delineation of what it is we're going to be paying. I did not find a dollar sign in there anywhere and I read through the attachments and the whole thing twice.
I think.
I don't think I've seen a contract like that.
I think it, it looks like this partially because it's, it's through OCSER and we actually don't normally, the way those work is they, they don't go through the board for board approval. And when we were talking about this right before the board meeting, I'm not even really certain that this requires board approval, but that being said, Eric can provide some information about.
Yes, so, uh, thank you. So actually what happened is that the COSER, the, the actual contract went through, I mean, was from the COSER. We work with TEQ, we worked with them for the past year. We talked about it in budget proposal season. It's a twenty-three thousand dollar expense that we, that goes through the COSER. They provide curriculum planning and a curriculum framework for our grades three through five teachers. We're actually at the stage where we're working on our second, our second unit with each of the, with each of those grades. So what happens in the process is that first there's a consultation meeting with the consultant and the grade team and where they talk about thoughts in terms of like what, what the teachers are actually proposing for their, their, their science unit. From there, they come up with goals and in actual, they come up with the theme, goals, et cetera. And then from there, OCSER go, I mean, TEQ goes back, they go back and they, and they have a development team that creates what's called a framework. And at that point, from the framework, there's opportunity for teachers to collaborate with them to discuss whether or not their approval was being done and the next steps. After all of that's completed, our teachers are able to put the finishing touches on the curriculum to make it whole so that it's delivered to the students. As I said, it's STEM-based curriculum, something that we haven't been doing in the past. Our teachers, they seem really excited by that, by the opportunity that's been presented to them this way. Because like I said, very different curriculum planning than what we've done in the past. So what you guys actually saw with the statement of work, that's something that's very different this year than what was done last year. They just put this, this piece in place this school year. And so the reason they've done so is that it's a protection for both the district and the TEQ. So basically what they're, in essence, what they're saying is that the work that's created by TEQ in our district should not be put in the hands of districts or other school districts. And, and they won't on their end, they will, they, they'll make sure that it stays in house as well.
I think that's a better explanation and, you know, should be considered if that wording should be included in here, so it's, you know, so.
Well, the only reason, actually the reason why it actually went to the board is that I, I guess that was my error because of the fact that I wanted, before it got approved, I wanted to make sure that it was okay, the state, statement of work was okay. So we actually sent it to the attorney. And once the attorney made some, some recommendations, it was adjusted by TEQ. So I just wanted to make sure that we could move it forward and that's why I asked if it could be put on the board agenda.
Does it, does it need our approval or is this just to inform us what's going on? So should we pull it and not even vote on it?
I have no problem voting for it now that we have an explanation as to what it is. It's just a procedural thing is that if we have this type of thing, it might be nice if there are administrative memo of a couple of paragraphs saying what it's about, what it's going to cost.
Okay.
I agree.
And, yeah, well, I would say if we were going to vote on it, we would need to have some of this word put into it so it's can stand on its own and not require explanation, which we believe that should.
So let's, well.
Yeah, no, I think we should.
I was going to say pull it.
Yeah.
And if we feel like it needs, you know, we'll change it for the next meeting.
The only other question I have, even if we're getting to this, was there's a statement, I think you alluded to it under proprietary rights, basically saying that everything they develop should have been the sole and exclusive property of TEQ. And if they're making it for us, why don't we have ownership of that as well since we're expending our resources in development of it?
We have it, we do have it, actually what I can show, I can bring to our next meeting or we get to Dr. Lennett out prior, is the booklets that were made, which are the property of us. It has our district name on it and we received last year from the work that was created.
Okay, I just have a question because the contract, item seven, proprietary rights, basically, sounds like, sounds like they only have exclusive rights to it.
Well, it's between us and them, yes. So maybe something.
Should I have the business of the school district?
Yeah, I would doubt it includes something to that effect, otherwise it just says that they, they don't want to have sole and exclusive property.
That might be a good thing to just follow up with them about because they could verbally say this is, this is yours, but if we're just getting the booklets, then we might not be getting the framework technology that, if that means that in.
We can't take it and modify or adjust.
It's not portable for us. They, if we decide to stop working with them, we no, we no longer have access to this thing that we've co-created with them. So it might, it might be something verbally that there are things that belong to us. I know because I've been on the other side. Where it's like, yes, 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 you get all these things, but you get to keep your, what you've developed in terms of your system. So it's worth asking about.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So is anyone making a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table it.
Second?
Should the, oh, what?
What'd he say?
What? What's your question?
Should the, should the motion be to table it? Because I mean, table it just means that the decision is put off for another day. We don't need a decision. So should we just vote the, should we just draw the, withdraw the motion to accept that item number on the consent agenda and just be done with it?
I'm not sure either way, so I think tabling it and then I can report back.
Okay, so we're, did you hear that, Anthony?
Yeah, I did. Okay.
So I, I made a motion to table it?
Mike, second?
Seconded.
Is there a count of questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All.
Post? Motion carried, eight zero. So eleven point oh nine will be tabled. I need a motion to adjourn meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried, eight zero.